So that's my question. Is there, is there a crosswalk there? And then I pulled state code that says that pedestrians can't, you cannot, I mean, pedestrians have to yield to traffic unless there's a designated crosswalk. So they can't just, somebody just can't walk out in the middle of the street and stop traffic.
Before you use staff members, I hope this is clear.
What I didn't notice.
Oh.
I guess the new person hasn't been sworn in yet.
No, but he just got his letter yesterday afternoon.
I did get a copy of that.
He should be here at the next one.
Oh, for planning commission?
I finally found someone to replace me. No, I, that wasn't mine. Schuman was the fifth ward. He's my, finally found a representative.
Oh, great. Who is it?
Brennan Williams. He works for Downstream Strategies.
Oh, okay.
What bribery did you have to do?
I told him he either had to become the new city planner or he could be a planning commissioner. He picked one.
This pays better.
It does. We got this handy dandy parking pass.
Yeah.
Chance.
I still use my old ones. I guess we're good to go. Let's go. Okay, I will call the meeting of the Morgantown Planning Commission to order. Does anyone want me to read the pre-meeting announcement? Didn't think so. Any public comments on matters that are not on the agenda? Okay, minutes from January 11th.
No minutes were provided.
Okay, there we go. Unfinished business, S-23-01, AST Morgantown Properties, 13 High Street.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just as housekeeping, you have an orange floor in front of you. It has a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to walk through. It also has a couple other elements for the cases here this evening. And the first one being the parking, shared parking facility plan. If you make it into your packet.
As a matter of housekeeping, I think we need to move to take this off the table first.
Yes, yes.
Don't move.
A motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, several seconds, all in favor?
All.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead.
So yes, the orange folder has several updates. One of them being the prepared, proposed shared parking facility that's included in the packet there and commentary and comments from the applicant regarding that. And so, yes, I'll go ahead and move through the slides. Again, at our last meeting in January 11th, the Planning Commission moved to table the Development of Significant Impact, which is a proposed charter school at 13 South High Street. In doing so, the Planning Commission asked for an updated circulation plan with accurate distances and commentary from an engineer or another professional and a plan of action regarding pedestrian safety regarding the drop-off and pickup times for the proposed charter school, as well as a memo or a memorandum or agreements that showing that the adjacent property owners are going to work with the applicant in order to make the project move forward. This is just on the screen again where the project is located on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side shows the zoning designation, which is in a B4 general business district. Since that motion was made, the applicant has provided the following information, a schematic drawing for the school pickup and drop-off area prepared by Alpha and Associates, parking spaces planned for 13 South High Street, as well as proposed parking facility on Prairie Avenue, which is parcel 102.1. A copy of the deed for parcels 126 and 126.1 because there was some ambiguity that staff had in terms of the number of spaces that could be contributed to the property. And we'll discuss that here shortly. Email correspondence regarding the implementation of the pedestrian and traffic control measures that was requested by the commission, as well as a memorandum between Prairie Avenue Properties and the charter school and a letter from the adjacent landowner, Mr. Jenkins, regarding the funeral home and the potential collaboration there to provide additional off-site parking. So again, this is a picture of the location here. You can see where the building is. This is looking from, on the left-hand side is looking from South High Street. This is the intersection of Prairie and, Prairie and South High Street. Wanted to, let's see here, move forward here. The next slide shows the schematic design that was provided by Alpha and Associates and wanted to show that in terms of, and it might be hard to see in your packet and I apologize, but there were measurements provided in terms of the vehicle size that was used to do this, to do this analysis and show that the maneuverability could take place. The area highlighted in green is related to an easement that would be given to the applicant if the project moves forward in order to facilitate the maneuverability for the circulation. And that is, that is needed for this retaining wall that's located here and highlighted in orange. And as report, as noted in the staff report, staff did go out and try the maneuver with permission from the applicant and was able to make the turn even though there was some parking issues and folks that were parked at Alpha and Associates' building where it's currently showing the circulation maneuver would be, but was able to clear this retaining wall though it was, it was, it was super tight. Also wanted to show that in terms of that circulation pattern, the spaces that would be available at any time before the drop-off and pickup or after the drop-off and pickup are located here. Then want to move on to the proposed shared parking facility. First, we'll talk about the existing site conditions. There were 24 parked, or 24 marked spaces that were presented by the applicant. When staff went out and looked at this, it's a little difficult because the property lines are, don't line up correctly. And we'll, again, we'll talk about the deed situation here in a minute. But if you look at what could be reasonably contributed to the property as being, be able to be used by them, as well as the two ADA parking spaces, we're looking at 21, 22 parking spaces. Now, I know the applicant has a few more listed here and they're accounting for this area that's currently striped next to the entrance of the building, has blue hash marks. Not sure if that was for additional ADA parking or what the purpose of the coloration was because it is in blue. But there are two ADA accessible handicap spaces on both sides of the, on either side of the door. So again, the applicant's saying that there's 24. Staff is saying there's between 21 and 22 if you look at, look at it. And then looking at Prairie Avenue, again, the report provided to staff was that there was 25 parking spaces. Staff went out and looked at this property. That took into consideration this parking space up here in the corner, which would be really too small for even a compact car. So staff was looking at 24 parking spaces as opposed to 25. And there was in the back where the retaining wall here is, there is a parking space along the wall, but there is a striped area in the back to allow that maneuverability so somebody that parks there can back up and then leaves the parking lot. And then this is the, this is the, the deep work that we researched. I just want to thank Mr. Colebank, who is the president of Alpha Associates and a partner with Prairie Avenue Properties. I've talked to him several times. He was gracious with his time to explain this. I've also talked to the applicant several times. And what I'm trying to illustrate here on the screen is this is kind of the area where those 10 to 12 parking spaces along the guardrail are located. These are the spaces that are highlighted in light blue are the spaces adjacent to Mr. Terabey's building. The question has always been, well, is, are these really viable spaces outside of the circulation plan? Can they be used for parking for the applicant's project? And what we found is that this parcel or this area highlighted in blue is leased from the Mon County School District to Prairie Avenue Properties. Prairie Avenue Properties has control of the area highlighted in yellow. And so therefore can make the spaces available. And with regard to the easement that we, that kind of green ring that's in this general vicinity here, it shows that that, they are able to facilitate that because they have a lease to do that. At least that's what it said in the deed documents. Yes, Mr. President? I'm sorry. Sorry.
So you said this area in blue, but I didn't see what you were pointing at.
Yeah, this is, this is the existing onsite parking spaces. So this is like kind of where this A is, is where the two ADA accessible spaces are.
Yes.
And then there's six spaces back behind the retaining wall.
Okay, and then you said the, the circle area, the other color circle area.
Yeah, this is where we have those 10 to 12 parking spaces where the property lines are shown on the map and I'll go back here to illustrate. Let's go back. Yeah, I don't know if that's going to give us a good one. This one here. The property line kind of comes back in here and goes back. So this is an old alley. That was a long, long time ago. If you look at how the, the, the lot split was done, these may or may not be directly associated with that property. But what I was trying to illustrate is, is that this area here, this area is controlled by, or leased by Prairie Avenue LLC. And so they have the ability to make those spaces available. And there was a question about it.
And Prairie Avenue LLC is Alpha?
Correct.
And somebody else?
Yes, and they're also, would be working with the applicant for the shared parking facility on Prairie Avenue.
Would be or already have a lease agreement?
In your, in the, they have already, I believe the applicant's already executed a lease agreement, but they provided a memo for the purposes of this meeting and it was signed by Alpha and Associates.
Okay. The only thing I would ask, like, when you have the extra information and you do it like this, I'm old, I can't read that. Can you do it?
Yes.
It's all I ask.
Absolutely.
I can't read it.
Can I ask a question about the lease agreement since you're talking about it now?
Yes, sir.
You stated something in about 20 years and obviously that's, that'd be a tough thing to sign off on. What's the story here?
So, and when we're talking about the shared parking facility, our, the city's ordinance requires that 20-year lease agreement. The applicant and I have been in conversation that right now, and applicant can clarify, they have a renewable lease agreement that would terminate, you know, given the proper notice, so on and so forth. That would be something that we'd have to, if we get to the next stage, negotiate because the ordinance is quite clear what has to be done. It needs to be a 20-year lease and it also needs to be recorded at the, at the, at the county courthouse. Now, I spoke with legal counsel. There is potential and opportunity to include language that if the use, you know, ceases or something happens to the school over time, then that could be backed out of, right? Because the use wouldn't be there. So the applicant would be obliged for, or committed to that full 20 years. That's language that we'd have to work with the applicant in order to make that possible. But that is a requirement in the codified ordinances.
So that's something we are not going to have to deal with tonight?
Correct. If that, that would be the Board of Zoning Appeals that would be addressing that.
Okay.
Any other questions related to this? I'm sorry. Go back to that slide.
So you're saying that yellow triangle is Prairie Avenue Properties that is subject to the lease agreement? All of it or some of it?
All of it.
Okay.
And it's not, it's, it's still the, it's still owned by the school district, but it's leased from Alpha and Associates and they have control over it.
Okay. You're going to have to, you're going to have to work with me on that. Because the school district owned it, Alpha can't lease it to anybody because Alpha doesn't have control over it unless Alpha leases it from the school and is subleasing it front, to the new venture.
Yeah, when I talked to Mr. Colebank, and again, I'm paraphrasing, there was something that got transferred, but it may not have been in the actual deep work that made that, it's, they're in control over it. So I'm taking what Mr. Colebank, the information he provided. And we could probably get clarification.
Yeah, what if he's wrong?
Oh, I'm, like, even half of the parking that they claim to have isn't theirs.
Well, I know, but. What, what, but, never mind. Has, has, as part of this, I mean, would it be the city attorney's role to say, yes, they own the property? Yes, they can lease the property? Because I don't think that's something that we have to go out and do. And I also don't think it's something that we have to take everybody's word for. I think we need clarification because if that, if what you're telling me is that yellow is owned by the Mon County Board of Education, but it's going to be leased to AST by Prairie Avenue Properties, which is not the Mon County Board of Education which owns it, then I, there's a disconnect.
Sure, I understand.
And I don't think it's up to us to try and figure that out. I think it's up to the city attorney to tell us that this is a proper chain of title and whoever says they're leasing it to them can't.
Yes, and the applicant may have more information regarding that as well. For everybody ready to move on, again, in your packet was included a description of the traffic alignment and control, as well as the guided process for how that would work, the circulation pattern. And then again, it showed the ability to stack per the plan provided by Alpha up to 13 vehicles in that pattern to unload and pick up people. And then also briefly mentioned the pedestrian traffic across High Street and having volunteers or individuals associated with the school assist with, with that cross-traffic area if people are crossing the street to other parking facilities.
Which brings me to the DOH. That's the state road, right?
Yes.
Does the DOH say that people can go out there and stop traffic?
Yes, so that's, that's, that's the update.
That's coming up next?
I have an update, yes.
Okay, so the next question is we have, you're able to get 13 cars in the circulation pattern at once? And we going to have, how many kids in the school?
I believe the applicant said between 80, 80 to 100.
Okay. Anyway, go ahead.
Initially, that, it won't be that, but that's what their, I think the expectation is to scale up. Again, then included in your packet was the memo between AST Morgantown Properties as well as Prairie Avenue Properties LLC stating that the lease terms for the shared parking facility, as well as the easement for the, to allow for the circulation pattern inside the parking lot. And then there's also the letter from Mr. Jenkins regarding wanting to collaborate with the applicant to make the project move forward and that, you know, that was included in your packet. One thing we did, get to finally talk to the DOH. And the update that I have is that they are likely to approve the applicant's driveway permit to allow the project to move forward. However, there will be comments provided with the, the driveway permit. And they will include things like, obviously, some, some discussion or commentary around not allowing cars to queue or to queue in the driveway. That's a concern, but that's, this is what I've been told. Also, there was concerns to Mr. Stranko's point at our last meeting about pedestrian safety and more specifically, and what I wanted to. And I asked for clarification on this is that there is an existing ramp on this side of the street next to the funeral home, but as you can see here, the infrastructure's old and outdated. There are no ADA compliant ramps there. That was a concern from the DOH, but at the same time, they said, you know, this is not, it's not, they're not building a new building here. It's existing, it's existing facility with existing infrastructure.
Oh, significantly changing the use of the building.
Understood, yes. And then the last was, you know, is, if the circulation plan that was proposed by Alpha doesn't work, what would be the Plan B? Now, I'm not sure if they're going to ask for that or require it. My assumption is, is that if they're going to give approval and they're just providing comments, the comment would be to think about a Plan B if the proposed circulation inside the parking lot does not work.
So the question I have is you got 13 cars in there. And everybody's showing up at the same time with, you know, 80 cars, 80 kids, 60 cars.
I think the numbers quoted to us at our last meeting were like at drop-off, they were expecting about 80 cars and at pickup, they were expecting 60 to 65 cars within those half an hour periods.
Where are they going?
They're queuing on the street.
No, they can't.
I know.
The DOH says they can't.
Well, I know, but.
And so who enforces that?
The enforcement would fall to the city more than likely.
Okay, who enforces that? Is it going to happen or are we having South High Street blocked for a half hour? With fire trucks coming?
I can't, I'm not sure how the police department would, you know, act in this situation or what they do now to facilitate anything with the, with the, with the high school.
Can we finish the report?
Yeah, sorry.
I think we have time to debate this later.
Oh, sure.
Finish your report and get all the facts. So just a question about this.
Yes.
This is a, this is a reliable DOH source. We're likely to approve this.
Correct. They haven't made the decision yet, but they're saying it likely will be.
Okay. I love the way they do business.
Don't you wish you could do business that way?
This is an important issue for the middle of our city. And they're likely to get around to it sometime soon.
Yeah, and I asked, I asked if I could share that information and they said yes with the board, but that's the, that's the terms that they.
So we just have to wait for smoke in the chimney. Sorry.
No, that's fine. So, yeah, I think we covered all the, and the other was the, kind of the part of the bicycle parking as part of the DSI and that was shown in your packet where that, that plan is to be. And again, that would be part of a BZA kind of review and approval to make sure that the bicycle parking was provided. But the space is located up at, to the, it would be the east side of the building, kind of in the kind of, I don't know, what you would call the material, landscape material that's there now. And that will conclude my report.
Well, could you conclude your report just reminding the commission what, what our job is with regard to DSIs? What's our standard of review? What, what should we, what does the code say we should be considering here?
You're looking at approving the proposed site plan for the new proposed use of that building.
In light of, in light of neighborhood impacts, is that correct? Is that what the code says?
Um, let me, let me get the exact terminology.
I just want to focus everybody on what we're supposed to be doing.
Sure. Let me just read what our standard language is. A development of significant impact is any proposed development whose characteristics warrant a more in-depth review by the Morgantown Planning Commission in order to mitigate the negative impact these characteristics may have on surrounding land uses in particular and on the surrounding neighborhood in general. Developments of significant impact are those that have a citywide or regional impact. Such impact could involve the transportation network, the environmental features such as parks and stream corridor, local schools, et cetera. Such developments could include large-scale residential, commercial, or mixed-use developments, employment centers, regional shopping centers, industrial, commercial, or mixed-use developments, employment centers, regional shopping centers, and so on. Any proposed residential or non-residential development that meets or exceeds any of the following criteria shall be determined to be of significant impact and will require a complete development plan be submitted and reviewed by the Planning Commission, as well as the Planning Division staff.
So this is a DSI because of the size and of the, of the building and the proposed use.
Yeah, 15.
And the code suggests that we're just here to mitigate impacts, not to approve or disapprove.
I think we have to consider whether there's going to be an impact in approve or disapprove based on what we feel our impact, what we believe the impact is going to be to the surrounding area or the city as a whole or the transportation network.
I think that's a reasonable reading of the code. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And that will conclude my report.
Well done, sir.
Thank you.
So since this was tabled, I don't think we have to publicly comment.
So since this was tabled, I don't think we have to public comment. Does anybody have any question for the planner?
I guess, you know, maybe it's not a question for a planner, but the, the proposers for this is. I'm wondering what the timeframe is to unload cars. Like, how long would it take for a car to come and get out of there if they were all lined up that way? So we can kind of do a little math here. We're just kind of guessing that, you know, if people group up at once, we know that's not gonna be the case, but.
Right.
Do we really know how much time we're talking about here, you know, in this scenario? And I know some schools I'm familiar with, they'll bring all the cars in, they'll unload them all at once, then they'll get them all out and then they'll come out. And I don't know if that's the plan here, or they're gonna do one at a time and how that all times out. Someone needs to do the timing and tell us.
This, this one says morning drop off between eight-thirty and nine AM.
Yeah, but, but does that mean, does that mean you're gonna schedule them and you're gonna say, oh, first grade class comes at eight-thirty? Second grade class comes at eight-forty, third grade class, you know, and, and, but you get two kids in the car and they're in two different grades, you know, and it doesn't always work, but.
That, and you've had younger kids too, and you get a first grader there by eight-thirty, good luck.
Yeah, I know. But you can assign parents times and you can say, this is your time, you need to be here in this window. And I just wanna know if they plan that far and timing wise.
You know, Bill, but pl- planning is one thing. But anybody's been at Suncrest Middle School at three o'clock in the afternoon knows the plans don't work. And frankly, I think this internal circulation issue is a red herring. I, I, and I think we shouldn't care about whether they play bumper cars on their property or not. That's not our business. Our question is, it is clearly, however they arrange the circulation, it is clearly constrained. Severely constrained parking area, pickup drop off area with respect to the volume of, of traffic that's gonna be through here. Therefore, we have to conclude that there's going to be spill out and a deleterious effect on the neighborhood.
Which was.
And, and let me just finish.
Sure.
And, you know, with regard to Mr. Jenkins, he's a wonderful guy and, and if you ask him for help, he'll say yes. But in this case, intermittent unpredictable use of the lot is even worse than no use at all. Because now we've got more chaos in the middle of a busy time. I, I'm confound, well, as I said earlier, I'm confounded by the DOH's nonparticipation here, but that's a whole different thing. But, you know, I think that this internal circulation, our only issue is how it impacts the neighborhood and, and the surrounding streets. And it clearly will, no matter how we arrange that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just giving them the opportunity to, to show us that it, it won't. And what, what I'm saying is, you know, maybe you get X number of cars, you can get them in and out in this time and you can schedule them. And will that even work over a half hour time period with this many and, and in a reasonable manner? So I, you know, we can make conclusions by them to the same. We can look kind of a little bit analytically at it and say, is it plausible? Tell us it's, show us it's plausible, because as you say, on the surface, we're having problems with this.
I think we have to conclude that this is going to have an, an impact on the surrounding streets and road network, including the state highway.
And that was my point when saying you got thirteen slots in there and a half hour to drop them off and sixty to eighty cars. It's not going to happen that nothing backs out on the street.
Can I bring up another concern as we're talking about numbers? They have fourteen classrooms, but we've been told they only intend to use seven. That's what we were told last time. And they're looking at about a hundred students with those seven classrooms. Page twenty-three of our packet is a letter from Mr. Terabishi that says. The school could outgrow and require relocation and the school's expansion. If they potentially intend to expand into those, they're gonna use all fourteen classrooms before they try to find another building. So what we're looking at now is a hundred students, maybe, and this was the, the reasoning given to us. Why they couldn't sign more than a year-to-year renewable lease for that property? Because what if we, what if we outgrow our property? But there, the numbers we're going on is based on only half usage.
So then you're looking at not eighty cars, but a hundred and sixty cars.
That's my question. They're, they're clearly going to fill this building before they go some, before they buy another or find somewhere else to go. And he himself, right here on page twenty-three, says that they're looking at expansion and outgrowing.
Besides the traffic and the negative impact on the surrounding streets and neighborhood, the other thing we talked about last time and I keep. Being concerned about is safety, just the pedestrian safety. It's a narrow sidewalk, it's a busy street. I'm confounded that the DOH is not talking about school zone and traffic alerts and all the things that we have around our other schools. So I, I think the safety issue is another one that I, I haven't settled yet.
Well, and, and as an example, it was probably Monday of this week, I, you know, going home, I pull up Prairie, I stop at that intersection. I'm looking to the left, but to the right, you can't see any cars coming that way.
It's a tough intersection.
And you can't see any pedestrians coming that way because of the building right there on your right is right on the corner.
Well, on page twenty of our packet is the, the memo that says crosswalk supervision. Staff members will be stationed at key crosswalks, but there is no crosswalk.
Right. That was my concern, was the lack of a crosswalk.
My understanding is, is this correct, if it's a state-owned highway, that only they can approve a crosswalk?
Yeah, they would have to, that's correct.
Which is another thing we need to address in this.
I think the message back to your friend at the DOH is we'd like to see more concern about the safety of our children with regard to this.
Oh, and I think, I think there was, but I think the issue that, that they, that we talked through was because it's an existing facility, and I get what you're saying, that, that the use would totally change. Because it's existing, if it was a new construction, absolutely, I think they would require those upgrades to be done. But because it's an existing building, there's, there's a difference there.
So we don't care if you're going into a building that's.
Again, I'm, I'm having strong, I need to understand the logic, but okay, this is not the question.
Director Yager, on page twenty-four, do you know what is meant by signage and barricades? Appropriate signs and temporary barricades will be placed to guide pedestrians and alert drivers. But again, this is a, a state road. Do you know what type of signs and barricades were?
I have not seen any, so I'd ask that you defer to the, the applicant. But I'm assuming they would have, at least in our conversations, there'd be people trying to, if there was queuing on the street, some letting traffic move out of the parking lot. Again, I defer to the applicant, but there'd be some coordination there to make sure people could get, once they stack and unload, they can move out of the space and then, you know.
But the DOH said they're not allowed to queue on the street.
That's one of the comments that they would put on their report.
And if they're not allowed to queue on the street, I don't think they can barricade the street.
Right.
Is that their, their yellow curb or our yellow curb? Who does yellow curbs on state highways? Is that us or them?
Mm-hmm, I'm pretty sure.
I mean, how can you efficiently load and unload without queuing?
Gonna make people drive around the block for ten minutes while.
I mean, it's just. Maybe there's a way, I don't know. I just, that's why I need kind of, tell me how this can work.
Right. And I think the last time the applicant didn't talk about trying to stagger times like you had mentioned just a minute ago.
Yeah.
And so we could hear from them about that.
I mean, I think I know my answer. We can continue debating as long as we would.
I don't know, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or anything that they can answer, or do you just wanna talk about it some more? What are you gonna do? You guys been quiet over there, you guys.
Well, you know, Mr. President, I don't think anybody here disagrees that we all wanna see this enterprise succeed. That's not the question before us. The question before us is a development, it's a definite impact and use of this location. That's the question. So I, I make sure we, we stay focused on what we're talking about here. Is will this proposed development have a deleterious effect on the surrounding neighborhood? What is the impact this development have on the city? I, I, I think those are the questions we have to answer.
I agree. Most of our public comment at the last meeting seemed to be focused on, but this would be a good school. And that is not of our concern. I homeschool my son, I believe in educational choice, that is not, not what. It has nothing to do with any of my concerns, but I don't see how this can operate in this facility on this street without. Signif, I think significantly impacting is actually an understatement. Significantly impacting that neighborhood and also our downtown traffic.
This may be an interesting thing to think of anyway, is the stairs that go up to Morgantown High at the end of that parking lot. Are they owned by Alpha or Education or the county?
Not in between the buildings you're talking about, in further in the back.
Yeah, if you go to the back of that parking lot, there's some stairs that go up to Morgantown High. And so I guess what I'm kind of getting at is there could be a potential circulation pattern there. If cars could, you know, queue through Morgantown High, make a, a road or pathway down there, steps for the cars to come down and then they would go right out. So they wouldn't be queuing on the street that way. They would be actually queuing in the parking lot at Morgantown High. And I don't know who owns that or if it's even.
Probably Board of Education for one.
Yeah, this, yeah, sorry.
Prairie Avenue, is that, I don't know if that's private there at the end or not.
This, this triangular piece that comes back here, that is the count, that's the school district.
But Prairie Avenue where it leaks out of that parking lot and meets up and turns to the right by Alpha. Is that city road or is that privately owned by Board of Education?
You can only go this way on that.
It, it looks like that triangular piece in yellow is right here.
Well, and, and I get that, but there's a road that comes out there, right by Giuliani's house.
Yeah, but it's one way it comes out.
Yes, it's one way it comes out, but.
Okay, I get it, you could go the other way.
You'd have to go down, you'd have to come down Prairie Avenue by the high school, drop them off there and then come around.
I was just thinking if you could queue them through the high school and then you could go right down there, that would solve all the problems.
Board of Education one.
But that would require a lot of agreements, but that would make this site work, I think. Particularly if it's done at different times than MHS, so.
So it would make the site work if people actually do that.
Well, if there was, if you could only go one way out the lot.
Right, but I, what, but what I'm saying is I'm taking my kid to school late, I don't wanna go, you know, up Wilson, around, down the corner, I'll just drop him off on South High Street.
No, it's one way out, you can't go.
But you, I'm just gonna drop off on South High Street, 'cause it's quicker. Who doesn't, right?
Just saying, I mean, I think it's a, it's an interesting thing to think about.
Yeah, but that's.
And I don't have, have no idea if everyone could, you know, get that in agreement with the Board of Education or whatever it needs to be agreed to, but that would, that would solve the queuing problem.
Is Prairie Avenue a public road? Or is it home by the city of Morgantown? Because it's between the high school and the high school's parking lot.
I think that's between university and South High Street it is. I don't know what portion up to the high school on Prairie is or is not.
Right, university and, and South High Street.
Between the two, definitely.
But then, South High Street up to, what is it, Waitman?
Yeah, that's the road right here, yeah. That, I don't know how far their right of way, their purview goes.
Yeah.
Gets it away from High Street, that's, I don't think I can think of.
Prairie State Road also, right? Or at least.
Controlled by.
The bottom portion of the state road, it's not a city street.
Right.
And that's, that, you're talking between university and South High, right?
Yes. That's my understanding.
The fire station shall be.
On the state road? Any more discussion? What do you all wanna do? I don't think we have to have public comments, or we shouldn't have public comments, because this was tabled, we had the public comments before.
Can I ask a administrative question? If this is denied by Planning Commission, do they have to wait six months or a year to bring it back if they would choose to, to explore an option like?
I, I don't know, I'll have to look that up.
They, if this is denied, they can petition with the circuit court for a writ of certiorari to say that we're wrong in good court.
Right.
So they have that option.
Or they could, if we haven't taken action, could withdraw, try to explore your option before it's dead in the water for them.
Correct. But I don't know whether it's six months or a year or whatever it is to, to bring it back to us. I, I just, I just don't know that timeframe.
Yeah, that's, I mean, those are the. And in that case, then you'd have to, you'd table it if you wanted to come back with more information or.
We could just take no action, right?
We can't take no action, we have to either, yeah, say yes or no, or they can withdraw it, or we can table it. The only way we can take no action is if they say we don't wanna go forward.
Pardon me?
I'd like to make that clear to them if it looks like this is.
Mr. Chair, ready for a motion?
If we're done discussing, if everyone's done discussing.
Yeah, I mean.
I've completed my discussion of the merits of the, of the plan.
Well, Mr. President, the applicant's here and he, he wants to speak. I'm happy to listen to him if the chair would entertain that. I agree, we're not obliged to do that, we have public comment on that.
Yes, and I think because of, you know, the way we've discussed this, I think that, that they can speak. So if you wanna come to the microphone, state your name and tell us what you wanna tell us.
Good evening, Abdul Terabishi, professor at WBU in neurobiology. As, you know, as the committee understands, the charter school system is not a, a, not a, a, one desk back. But as explained in the last meeting, that with unlimited resources like, like county schools. And to allow for alternative education, it's, you have to work together, right? And to attest the use of the streets around, you know, Morgantown High with two thousand students are able to, to achieve, you know, get their students in and out. And member high school students also, they drive, a lot of them drive themselves to school. So that's even like compounded the effect of, of what we're planning to do. And the, and also, if, Mr. Yager, if you don't mind, put the circulation.
Sure. Our, our engineers are just doing this here, but obviously we can, this can be moved all the way up here. But, which can fit more than thirteen cars. And to, uh, Dr. Peter's points, you can, if you do the, if you do the math, if each car can, as you said, can carry like, you know, to two students. We're talking about, you know, expanding this, and so it's not just thirteen cars, you can almost, almost double that, like to twenty cars. And be, and, you know, multiply that, but you have forty students, so within ten minutes, you know, you don't have a queue. And we will, and I, I did mention in the report, and the, one of the things that we are gonna do, the, we are gonna do staged. People are not gonna come here and park here. They're gonna have, the first person coming here, they're gonna have to queue all the way to down, down here and next. And also to address the, you know, let's say if we develop, if we started developing a queue, we'll ask people to, to go to our, you know, temporary, not the temporary. The, the, the shared parking that we can do and ask them to park there until people make it to the next circulation. We'll have communication, that's what I mean, like we'd have people over here and over on the, on the off, other off-street parking. We avoided asking the, you know, the use of public streets for queuing, like what Morgantown High is doing. Because Morgantown High, that's what they're actually doing, right? They're using the, the state bridges, the, the state bridges, right? These are state bridges, they're built by the state, maintained by the state. When, when you guys go like around seven AM, you'd see the, you know, the, what's the name of the other bridge? That, the, yeah, the pleasant, the, the Pleasant Bridge, you'd see cars queued there. So we're asking to be, at least be, be treated the same as high school. Charter schools are not a private school, they're, they're public schools, they're publicly funded but run privately. And our mission here is to, um. I'll state this upfront to, 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 to the council, so. The owners, AST stands for, you know, our three owners. Those three owners are basically what they did, they bought the building, they're gonna lease it for free to the school with at least five years. So you're, the more pressure you're putting out, you're bringing on the, on the demand, this, it's gonna break us down. The three are, who gave this building to the rent free are gonna basically say, we can. can't, we, we can't do this, you know what I mean? Like, we can't like support this anymore. And then we would, you know, close this chapter for the, for this aim. We're, we're really trying to, to provide, Mr. Stumble mentioned that, you know, her, her kids are homeschooled. We also wanna provide options for people who want, who want to have options than, you know, public school, charter school, and homeschooling, like, as you said, like home choice, or, or choice for education, that's something important. So I just wanna add those two points. And for the, for the parking, I just wanna mention, it's in the, it's in the staff report, the, the combined parking between us and Alpha is, is how many, how many cars?
About plus or minus 67.
Sixty?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven cars, so sixty-seven cars, shared parking between us and them. So remember, we do have, just, if you ask people to park, if you come in and park, not have even circulation, that would bring you up to the number. The shared parking is 67.
It's down Prairie Avenue.
It's in the staff report.
So if you're familiar with that, if you go down Prairie, Funeral Home is on your right, it's, that building that's right on the corner and is difficult, it's right behind that.
It includes the lot here, on the, on the right-hand side, the 23 parking spaces.
They have all this too, like, they have this, all this, so... So I just wanna bring this up to the, to the committee, because that's in the staff report. The staff report is approving, the state is approving. So I just see, like, from the panel, I just need to, you know, from you guys to look, what I'm trying to say, the people who are in the, in the, you know, who are hired for this, for these positions, like, we, we ourselves hired, we're hiring these professionals to make that decision, and they're making their recommendations, I would ask the committee, please, the commission, please to, to consider the commit, the, the city and the state's act, you know, staff recommendation. 'Cause I'm not asking to go against any, any staff recommendation, going like, please consider our application within the recommendation of our staff, and I'm willing to work with all, any itemized items that you wanna make comments on. We chose, we arbitrarily chose, like, as I said, like, you know, eight, eight-thirty, we can expand that further, but we're just trying to make sure that we, that the last person coming late to Morgantown High is not gonna be affected by circulation. But we can start, we can say at 7:30, we can have the circulation for an hour. What I'm trying to say, we have people who are devoted to this. Yeah, I mean, not, not just...
It's a queue?
Like, I can tell you, I'm, I'm the vice chair of my department and, and the Department of Radiology at WVU. People ask me, do you have any, do you have alternative education? People, and they ask, when I interview people to, to come into Morgantown, and I told them, no, we don't, we only have public schools. Right now, we have West Virginia Charter School, but they're, but they're having...
Chair, again, we're not here to debate the...
We're not there to debate that, but I'll, I'll stop on my, is it okay for, for the question?
No, no, we, we've already had the public comment, so here's...
There's, there's other private schools in Morgantown too, it's not just the charter schools and, you know...
And, and we, you know, our concern was the parking, the circulation, but then what I heard was, we want alternative education, this is good. We're, we've never debated that. We've never said we don't agree with that.
Yeah.
Well, and then you come back to, we will work with you, but to me, your obligation is to do that before you come here, not come here and say, tell us what, approve it, and then we'll do what we have to do or should have done to get our approval. So it's kinda putting the cart before the horse to me. Everything has a process.
Yes.
And the process is, here's the things we need to do to get our approval, and then we come and we get our approval. And what I'm hearing is, give us our approval, then we'll do what we should have done. That's what it seems to me. So that's, I mean, that's all I, I'd say.
I agree completely, Mr. President. Well said, well said.
So it's...
Yeah, for, for instance, you know, if that loop could expand to the end, and you can come up with a higher volume of cars, and you could do a study and tell us, well, here's the time, unload, et cetera, et cetera, I think we would all look at this differently. Because right now, with just 10 cars in that loop, it's almost impossible to think about...
That gives me even more, maybe not even more, but that gives me alternative concerns, because if this goes back further to the right on what we're seeing there, then we're cutting out even more of the parking spaces. And he's saying that this other lot that they could potentially have access to will be used to stage. Where are the employees of these two businesses parking if all of the parking is being used either for the pickup-drop-off line or staging for the pickup-drop-off line?
Well, that's what I'm trying to get around, staging issue, 'cause I don't think it's possible to stage that way.
No, it's not.
You can't see, I mean, it's, you're gonna end up with cars on High Street and queued, and, and we don't make those rules. The DOT does. We have nothing to do with queuing on High Street or Pleasant or, you know, Walnut or wherever, so, you know.
It seems to me our job is to prevent negative impacts on the surrounding land uses, that's what the code says, the surrounding neighborhood and in the larger sense, the city. And no matter what clever parking scheme we can have here, I don't know how you could find that this doesn't have, this use would not have negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood and the city. And, and I'll put that in the form of a motion, that the, the commission find that this proposed use would have a negative impact on the surrounding land uses and neighborhood and a negative impact on the city, and therefore we, we would deny the petition.
Is that a motion?
That was meant to be a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we want, anybody wanna discuss that?
I would like to throw out the option to motion to table, to give, I'm, I'm not trying to drag this out.
How many times am I supposed to do this?
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to drag it out. I mean, if we could get some of these things tied down...
Yeah, I understand the conversation.
To our satisfaction, so I would, I'd support that motion.
But if this is denied, you may have to wait a whole year to try to bring it back, and I recognize...
I don't know that to be the case, and I wanna check.
It's six months or a year, once an application is denied by the Planning Commission, this application, unless it's significantly modified.
Right.
Well, I think I would find a significant modification if we resolved these issues.
Well, there would be criteria in, in the code as to what, what triggers that significant modification.
So we have a motion in a second. It could still be withdrawn if he chose to withdraw and go back to the drawing board?
Yes.
May I speak with the, with the applicant, please?
Is that city code we're talking, is that, or state code we're talking about?
It would be your city code, so it's either, the zoning ordinance, it's either six months or a year traditionally. I don't know, he's not sure.
I'm gonna try to find, I got it, here, I'm gonna try to find it. I can't, I can't remember. So that would be administration of the zoning code.
Yeah, the, any application as it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so again, I just don't know what would trip those thresholds for being a, a major change from this application. Obviously, it's not the building footprint, you can't change that in this situation.
Well, I, I would argue it's up to us, but...
And it may be, but there should be guiding criteria in the code for that.
We can agree there's not a lot of guiding criteria regarding PSIs, is there?
No.
But the main issue here is, is circulation, parking, et cetera, and, and that's what potentially would change in a new application.
Issue is impact on the neighborhood and the city.
No, but I mean, that's what would change in a new application, as far as something changing.
And it's a tap. Hello?
Hello.
You're back.
Yes. The applicant would like the opportunity to pursue this further, and a motion to table would be...
Mr. President, I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your second. You withdraw the second, I guess.
Sure.
Okay. So...
Okay, did you have a motion?
Yes. I make a, what are we doing? Making a motion?
We're still in session, please.
Make a motion to table.
Is there a chamber of the public to speak, or is there not a chamber?
No.
No, there's, there's no public.
Please have a good night.
I will make a motion to table this up.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I think if you announce, it'd be everything.
Very good.
Do you need an answer from the TOH?
Well, they're never gonna get a answer, 'cause they don't want to.
But they, they have to.
Okay.
We're gonna put 100, 100 children in this building, what do you think? Oh, well, you know.
Just whatever, we don't need a crosswalk, we don't need signing or anything, just let them run across the street.
I, I guess the next one is MJS 22-01, R&amp;R Holdings.
Yes.
Why is that so unfinished business?
Thank you, yes, and the applicant is here. So back in 2022, the...
Oh, yeah, got it.
Sorry. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I think he was commenting on his familiarity with the application, Mr. President.
Yeah, soon as I heard that, oh, yeah, I got that one.
In 2022, the subdivision plat was conditionally approved. In 2023, the applicant requested an extension to allow work to be done, more work to be done on the infrastructure improvements. Staff has been working with the applicant, and has had, due to staffing issues in the office as well, being able to communicate what needs to get done in a timely manner, and so staff is requesting a two-month extension for this project.
So final plat?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Everybody's second.
I forgot you're the second.
Do you wanna... Do we need to take, no, it doesn't need to come off the table.
It doesn't require a public hearing, but the applicant is here, so...
Do you wanna say anything, or just you go with what he said?
Yeah.
What he said.
How certain are you that two months is long enough?
We plan to bring the final plat in March.
So you're giving yourself a one-month buffer extra, just in case.
So there, so there are some infrastructure improvements that still need to be done. I've consulted with legal counsel about how we could potentially structure that at the next meeting to allow the final plat to potentially get approved by Planning Commission, but allow for these, some of the additional items to be addressed later.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Anybody wanna discuss, or just go for it? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? There's one opposition.
No, no, it wasn't.
You're, you're just slow.
Mr. Lawser, okay. It was all across, okay.
Just slow, okay.
We'll watch the camera back, so...
I was also being slow, but in favor.
Okay. Move on to new business, MNS 24-01, Woodward Development, 11 Hartman Run Road.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the applicant is here tonight. Applicant seeks to develop a medical cannabis dispensary on the easternly portion of the site. Again, a map on the left-hand side shows the parcel boundaries, a map on the right-hand side shows the split zoning that currently exists, and for, you know, we've checked around the office and probably just because of the topography, and when distances were set back with the GIS, it just kinda followed the line. 'Cause basically, the bottom of the hill or the, the flat land is along this, and the top or Mineral Avenue is along this area here. So the applicant wants to split the property. Currently, there's a non-conforming use here, located on the right-hand side, where the hotspot is currently, this is where the proposed subdivision would be located, where there's this existing fence, and this is the parcel that would be potentially redeveloped, given its B2 zoning designation. Here's a copy of the survey plat. Again, this is the outline of the boundary, the area in beige is to be subdivided off and become its own parcel. The parcel in green is to be the residual. When you look at the minimum lot provisions, it does meet those in terms of size, lot size, minimum frontage, things of that nature. So yes, that will conclude staff's report.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Did the discussion come up about requesting to rezone so that it is one zoning district?
It, it's in the staff's recommendation, but that hasn't been discussed with the applicant yet.
But it wasn't discussed to do that ahead of time?
Correct.
Okay.
There, there was a discussion about the zoning in general, but yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for the planner or anything? Okay, applicant, wanna say anything?
I think that really just sums it up.
You have to state your, you can give them the microphone, state your name. You're fine.
Oh, you're fine.
I just, I just told it.
There you go.
Yeah, I think that sums it up. They just, they own the, the property, the, the whole property, and we're just looking to subdivide it so that they can develop the other side. It currently has that building on it that you could see demolished and put the, put the new medical cannabis dispensary there.
Okay.
Yeah, that would...
It'll be so convenient for you.
I'm sorry, we'll go back to it.
It's okay.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Oh, I didn't stop.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Now you can look the other way and see if there's anyone there that's thinking. Discussion, or staff recommendation, sorry.
Staff recommends approval subject to the parcel to be created to be actually rezoned to a B2 classification, and as well as the other two items listed in the packet.
Move for approval subject to staff conditions. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
Opposed, I think that we should have, nevermind.
Reszone to person?
Yes, yes. I'm opposed.
Okay, is there any more? Okay.
Okay. Any committee reports? Staff comments?
Just that we have a, a new member being appointed, Brennan Williams. So excited to have him come on board, I know. So he'll be joining us hopefully at the next meeting, so Brennan, look forward to having you on board.